Okay, get my gavel up, make it official. Good afternoon, I'm gonna go ahead and call this session of the City of Gig Harbor Hearing Examiner to order for the record. Today is Tuesday, March 1st, 2022 at 1:30 PM. We have one item on the agenda today. This relates to numbers PLCUP 210003, PLSPA 210012, and PLDR 210186 involving a request for a conditional use permit, site plan amendments, and design review approval to allow for development of a drive-through restaurant facility at 4823 Point Fosdick Drive, the site of the now vacant Opus Bank Building. My name is Andrew Reeves, I'm a hearing examiner with Sound Law Center. The city has selected to hold certain land use application hearings like this one. And today will be my role. Getting quite a bit of background noise.
I mean mute.
Could that be you, Mr. Murdoch?
I don't think so, it's just me here.
Oh weird, okay. Oh, okay, well, I'll keep going. So, I think I was just saying, my name is Andrew Reeves and I serve as the city's hearing examiner. And today will be my role to collect evidence in the form of exhibits and testimony to determine whether this proposal complies with the city's comprehensive plan, zoning ordinances, critical areas ordinances, and the specific criteria for approval of a conditional use permit under the municipal code. And we'll get clarification on this, but probably potentially also to determine whether this proposal complies with the requirements for site plan amendments and design review approval as well. To that end, I received several exhibits in advance of the hearing that I had an opportunity to review. These include a staff report prepared by city staff and architectural plan sets. Other information provided by the applicants, a comment letter from the Squawks and Island Tribe, information on parking and traffic related to the proposal. Further information on the review that occurred by various city agencies and departments, and ultimately information on the notice that went out in relation to the application and today's hearing. And also, sorry, one more comment that was provided by, I believe, the manager of the overall property related to parking. So, I'll go ahead and admit those exhibits into the record. Should anyone have additional exhibits they'd like admitted into the record, let me know when it's your opportunity to testify. And I'll go ahead and address admitting additional exhibits at that time. Speaking of testimony, our testimony today will be under oath or affirmation. That's because we're my decision to be appealed under our state's Land Use Petition Act. The recording of today's hearing as well as my decision and the admitted exhibits would serve as the foundation for any such appeal. I may and often do ask questions of those that are testifying, I'm not trying to trip anyone up. I'm just trying to ensure that I have a thorough understanding of the proposal so that within 10 business days of the record closing, I'm able to produce a decision that is hopefully clear and legally defensible. Finally, the order that I believe we're gonna follow today is first we'll hear from city staff who will give an overview of the proposal and explain the review process that occurred with city staff. Following that, we'll turn to our applicant team to see if they have any additional information they feel that myself or members of the public should be aware of in advance of my making any decision on the proposal. Then we'll check and see if there are any members of the public interested in testifying. I don't believe we have any members of the public that have joined thus far, but we'll check back in at that point in the hearing. And if anyone has joined, they will have that opportunity. And if appropriate, at the end, we'll go back to the applicant team and city staff to respond to any such testimony. Finally, on the technology, you know, generally we'll try to remain muted when we're not talking so that we don't have any crosstalk. And I have been battling a cold for it seems like two months now. And so I might actually mute or turn my video off to blow my nose. And if that's the case, I have not gone anywhere, I just didn't want you all to have to suffer through that with me. So, with that, I'll go ahead and get city staff's warning. So, thank you for being here, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you, and can you clearly spell your name for the audio recording and explain your role here at the city?
So, my name is Jeremy Hammer, that's J E R E M Y H A M M A R. I'm an associate planner at the City of Gig Harbor. And I took over this review near the end after I had a staff member leave the city, so.
So, if there are any mistakes, it wasn't you that did it, right?
Definitely not.
All right, well, thank you for being here, Mr. Hammer. In my assessment of what is included in the record track with the understanding of the exhibits?
Yes.
Excellent, okay, well, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves, good afternoon, everybody. We're here for the hearing examiner's decision on the Chipotle Mexican Grill conditional use permit, which is encompassed in PLCUP 210003, as mentioned earlier. The site address is 4823 Point Fosdick Drive, and it is located within the Point Fosdick Square Shopping Center. They propose tenant improvement will include redeveloping an existing space previously occupied by Opus Bank. The existing banking window and driveline will be reused to accommodate a pickup order window for the restaurant. Additionally, the proposal includes a minor site plan amendment and an administrative design review under file numbers PLSPA 210012 and PLDR 210186 respectively. The use is regarded the use is regarded in the Gig Harbor Municipal Code as a drive-through facility use. Drive-through facilities may be conditionally permitted in the B2 general business zoning district which the site is located. This conditional use permit was required due to a change in use with the use associated with the drive-through facility. So, went from a bank with a drive-through to a restaurant with a drive-through. I believe prior to the bank, it was actually a restaurant without a drive-through. Possibly, not exactly here on the history of that. So, as part of the application, the applicant has provided a cover letter including responses to the conditional use permit criteria in support of the request, which is included as attachment B to the staff report. Again, the site is located B2 general business and is surrounded on all sides by that same zoning B2. Access to the site will be provided from an existing drive aisle of Point Fosdick Drive Northwest to the west of the site or the subject parcel. Project site does not contain any regulated critical areas and the scope of the application is exempt from CIPA. All proper noticing was provided for this application in public hearing. In public hearing, staff received one comment, as mentioned earlier, that was with the notice of application. The comment was received in response to the N O A from Squawks and Island Tribe of Indians stating that the Squawks and Island Tribe of Indians would concur with recommendations from the Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, DHP. Should any recommendations be provided to the city? However, no recommendations were provided from the DHP related to this proposal. City received no comments in response to the public notice of public hearing at the time the staff report was prepared and at the time of this meeting. Staff has reviewed the proposed conditionally use request for consistency with all relevant provisions of Big Harbor, City of Gig Harbor's municipal code and comprehensive plan. The analysis is detailed in section eight of the staff report, which I will briefly summarize. The proposal is consistent with the city's definition of drive-through facility set forth in Gig Harbor Municipal Code Section 1704285, which is defined as an establishment as allowed in the zone that permits customers to receive services or products while remaining in their vehicles. These facilities are conditionally permitted in B2 zoning district, provided that they meet the conditional use permit decision criteria set forth in municipal code section 1764040. The proposal aids in preserving the existing character already established by previous uses on the project site. In addition, there are drive-through facilities for banks and other restaurant uses on a number of sites within Gig Harbor and propose uses consistent with the existing character of the area. The proposed drive-through facility is located in a manner which can be served by public facilities and street capacities without placing an undue burden on such facilities if properly conditioned. The site provides adequate parking to serve the proposed use. It was mentioned that the property owner provided a letter, which that letter stated that due to this proposal's increased need for parking over the previous use all remaining parking that was associated with the binding site plan, which is included as exhibit G to this staff report. The binding site plan, Paul's share park is associated with that has been exhausted as a result of this proposal. So, with that, considering this analysis, staff recommends the hearing examiner conditionally approve the proposed conditionally use permit, administrative design review, and minor site plan amendment for Chipotle Mexican Grill. Should the examiner decide to approve the CUP, staff recommends the imposition of the conditions outlined in section 10 of the staff report. This concludes my brief of the project, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. I guess my first question, just to be clear, so there's no major construction, the conditional use permit is essentially because in changing the use, you know, this type of use is allowed within the zoning district, but a conditional use permit is required, is that accurate?
Yeah, additionally, because I think this this use would have a greater impact on traffic circulation than the previous use. So, previous approvals, we would have to kind of reexamine that to make sure it's still meets the criteria of the conditionally use permit.
Got it, staff has concurred, folks would rather go get a burrito than go to the bank, I think that makes a lot of sense. So, that's why we're here today. The other, the other question I had though is, I believe in Gig Harbor, site plan amendment review, minor site plan amendment review and design review, generally speaking, don't fall to the hearing examiner and or administrative. In this instance, is this utilizing the consolidated review process such that I actually do make the decision on these, these other types of review, just to be clear on that?
That is correct.
Okay, so I ultimately have all the power, I will make a decision on the CUP, the site plan amendment, and design review, correct?
I believe, yes, I believe the criteria for each of those are listed within the staff report as well.
Just wanted to yeah, every jurisdiction does it a little different and just wanted to make sure that no one has already made a decision on site plan and and design review such that I wouldn't want to be duplicative or stepping on toes, etc. So, I think that makes sense, thank you for clarifying that. In terms of, toward the end, you had talked about, I think, the letter about parking being maxed out. I guess my only question there is, nothing in the recommended conditions as far as I can tell, you know, requires the applicant or requires anything, any process by which that's, you know, updated on the BSP? I'm wondering, is that possible, something to the effect of, you know, the BSP shall be updated to reflect that, you know, no additional parking is available, absent changes to the site, something to that effect? I'm just trying to think through the implications of if some other building, this is kind of over by the movie theater, I think.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, if some other use change, just just want to make sure that someone, it's clear somewhere without anyone having to dive too deep that parking is not an issue currently as detailed with this project, but potentially could be an issue in the future. Has staff given any thought to that?
My intent for that was that that would be captured in the parking calculation, exhibit D.
Right, I, I'm not saying that currently there's an issue with parking. I'm imagining if, if
In the future.
He were updated or there wasn't some, some, the site plan itself didn't have a notation about this. The next applicant that comes along might go, hey, we're, we're gonna put in, you know, something really cool and all of a sudden parking becomes a problem. I'm just trying to determine if there's, if staff has any thought and I'll, maybe the applicant has a thought, but you know, whether there can be a note added to the site plan or to the, to something that makes it clear that, you know, parking is, is following completion of this proposal, the parking associated with this particular BSP is now maxed out.
I think I will need to look into that, so I'm not certain of the procedure that we would do for that. I know that we, in our permit tracking system, we would list all the parcels of the BSP. So, it could get captured in that, but I think your point to having it attached specifically to the binding site plan and perhaps amended might be a good course of action, but.
Okay, well, we'll, let me see if the applicant has any thoughts on to deal with that, I mean, I guess even if it were clearly captured in my decision, maybe that would be enough to ensure that, you know, it doesn't get lost in the, you know, the sands of time, but this does happen and sometimes, so.
Yes.
Ultimately, then, I think that was it, other than I do always like to ask, has the comprehensive plan or zoning code been amended in any way since this application was deemed complete that would have any impact on this proposal in terms of testing?
It has not.
Okay, great, thank you, those were the immediate questions I had for city staff. So, with that, I believe we were gonna go to Ben Wilson.
Good afternoon.
Hi, can you hear me okay, Mr. Wilson?
I can, can you hear me?
I think, yeah, there was a little feedback, but try one more time.
Good afternoon.
There, okay, I think that'll work, so I'm gonna swear you in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you give here today?
I do.
Thank you, and can you just clearly spell your name for the audio recording and explain your role in relation to this project?
B E N W I L S O N. And I work for the architecture consultant for Chipotle that is handling this project.
Okay, great, thank you for being here. I don't know if you had anything sort of prepared remarks, but essentially this is your opportunity as the applicant representative or lead on the applicant team to present any additional information you feel that myself or members of the public should be aware of in advance of my making decision on this proposal.
Yeah, I think, I have a couple things, I think most people here are probably pretty familiar with Chipotle's operation and how they work. So, I'm not gonna get too much into that. The big thing is the drive-through use at Chipotle is called a Chipotle lane. And they utilize mobile ordering instead of the standard squat box that we would see at other restaurants with the drive-through. So, customers order online and then they drive to the site and then they go up to the pickup window, say their name, and they are handed the food. And then they are able to move on and go eat that at home, at the office or wherever. So, a little bit different service type than what's typically seen. And Chipotle actually did a couple studies of this to see what their stacking lane would be. So, this was done pre-pandemic in 2019 on a couple of their stores. I picked the busiest one. I know they're hopeful that this is a pretty busy location, so I utilized that. And they had a max queue length of seven vehicles, which during the study, that was only 0.12% of the time. And then they had a queue length of four vehicles or less, 99.37% of the time. And so, this, so per the Gig Harbor Municipal Code, stacking should be 10% of the peak hourly volume. And we are noting a peak hourly volume of 37 vehicles per the traffic report, which I believe has been included in your submittals. And so, that would be 3.7 vehicles. So, we are showing four vehicles for the stack that are within the, I guess, bank drive-through with the curbs and everything. And then we also show an additional couple vehicles spilling out a little bit into the parking area to kind of show how it would be handled in the extremely rare circumstances that queue gets a little bit longer than what you would typically experience. With that being said, that stacking doesn't ever spill out into any roads. It just kind of wraps around into the parking lot to help accommodate that. And then, as you will be reviewing, I guess, a couple of the other things that we're doing to the exterior of the building. This, this building is quite large for Chipotle's typical use. So, we've actually taken out a couple of windows and kind of created undercover patio area for the space. Should be nice area for people to enjoy eating outside, but also keep people hopefully out of the rainy climate that you see in the Pacific Northwest. I believe that is everything I had, unless you had any questions for me or wanted me to dive into anything a bit further, or if Scott had anything to add.
Sure, Mr. Murdoch, did you have, excuse me, did you have anything you wanted to add? And then, if I have any questions, you guys can decide who best can answer them, but your thoughts there, Mr. Murdoch?
Yes, I could add a couple things, do I need to be sworn in?
Yep, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in the testimony you have here today?
I do.
Thank you, if you could clearly spell your name and explain your role with the project.
S C O T T, Murdoch, M U R D O C K. I'm a design manager for Chipotle and I am assigned to the Pacific Northwest region.
All right, thank you for being here, sir.
Thanks for having me. The, the couple of points I wanted to add were with regard to the mobile order aspect of the Chipotle lane model, which is something that we are now just starting into our third year of use as a company and it has been extremely well received. You know, pandemic notwithstanding, we had favorable results even prior. And the point that I wanted to make with, as Ben described, within 99% likelihood of having four or less cars in queue, the real, you know, the, the technology that drives the ability to keep the queues down is all related to algorithms that run in our central systems when orders come in from either PCs, phones, tablets, all of the digital mobile order input streams. And that is a level loaded demand algorithm that assigns a pickup time to the customer based on sales tracking in that existing restaurant that they've chosen. The app will allow you to choose to pick up from any restaurant you'd like. But once you've made that choice, it enables that algorithm to understand the, the peak demands and where you are in, in terms of staffing and assigns either a first available time, which can vary, but it's typically within 15 to 20 minutes. And then you could also choose 10-minute increments thereafter. So, when you've placed your order, you've not only customized your selection on every entree, but you've paid for it as well. So, I, I understand the, the terminology for the use of a quote-unquote "drive-through" and order window, but I wanted to clarify that there are, there are no orders taken at the window. There are no transactions processed at the window. Right, no squat box and menu board like as described. So, with the algorithm keeping the queue levels down low, no understanding that so many cars available in a 10-minute increment, we think it's consistent with our environmentally sensitive approach to all aspects of our business. We're not looking to build drive-throughs, we're not looking to come into communities and create giant long queues of cars just motoring in place, nor add any sort of sound or visual, you know, congestion to our sites. That's also consistent with how we've treated the Opus Bank building itself. Obviously, the Point Fosdick Center has a comprehensive series of design criteria that we need to meet. And in our mind, the simplest way to do that is to literally leave the building intact. We're building our use within the shell of the former bank. The only exterior, we're even keeping the exterior drive lane and covering intact. We did have to change out the bulletproof glass and steel sliding drawer and the bank appropriate, you know, transaction point at the window, that's obviously all being swapped out. We have what's called our digital make line that'll be on the other side of the glass and an automated way to open the window and pass the food over to our customers. So, other than, you know, just repairing any sort of blemishes or re-treatment of things like wood stain on a fascia or, you know, buffing out glass or repointing brick, we chose to leave the building completely intact, including the landscaping, area lighting, the drive-through, the cover, etc. So, those two things are actually consistent in our approach. And I just felt like I would add that that is Chipotle's design and corporate ethos, where that is coming from.
I really want to know what's gonna happen with the bank vault. I'm envisioning converting it into a fridge or a freezer, but I'm guessing it probably went somewhere else.
Yeah, your second guess is correct, although we have occupied former banks and kept them in, in creative ways. This, this site, it's gonna go.
Yeah, we, we have a building here in Tacoma, the old post office, and there's several restaurants and bars that still have vaults as part of it, it's pretty cool. But, off topic, thank you for explaining some understanding is, you know, rather than having a high school kid, you know, be at the drive-through, take your order, have that go into a queue, have, you know, cars lining up, there's no sort of process that, you know, logically makes the food in any specific order to move the queue along quicker, you know, you guys use computers and algorithms, etc., etc., such that I get on my phone, your algorithm can tell where I am, I put in what I want, and then, you know, as long as I follow the recommendation of the algorithm, I show up and I get my food pretty quickly without having to, you know, roll down the window in the rain and yell into the, the box. Is that about right?
Yeah, that's about right, and should you jump the gun for, you know, just because you're excited to come get your Chipotle? We actually have designated spaces where we can direct you to pull on ahead and we'll bring the food to you. And obviously, we're not talking about a long wait there either, that would be a very quick, by the time you got there and parked, we'd pretty much have your order out to you.
Got it, okay, well, I think that'll make sense to me. I guess the only question I had further at this point was, has the applicant team reviewed the recommended conditions of approval that Mr. Hammer included in his staff report?
Yes.
Any, any issue complying with those recommendations?
I don't believe so.
Okay, and then I, for either of you, I'll just have one person at a time. I'll start with Mr. Murdoch, and if you're the right person, great, if not, try to hand it to your team. I guess the only concern I had was this, I guess it's not necessarily Chipotle's concern and you, I, I don't expect you to have the answer, but I guess my long, longer picture concern was putting in a popular, you know, destination like this is gonna ultimately max out the parking for this particular binding site plan. I was trying to think through the future of the site itself, which would ultimately, I think, benefit, you know, your client to the extent that you don't want parking to become a problem if some other, you know, Ben and Jerry's goes in or something else that people really want to drive over and get. So, my thought was maybe something should be either updated on the binding site plan and note somewhere or even just in my decision, make it clear that, you know, absent further review, no additional parking is available. But just seeing if you had any thoughts on a good way to accomplish that.
Well, I, I certainly can't speak to how the, how the plan might be noted, but I can point out that obviously, the idea of maxing out available parking on a huge shopping center implies that every single retail tenant is at their max capacity at the same exact time. On top of that, I think I'm at liberty to disclose, at least in a general way, that this Chipotle lane business model has been phenomenally successful for us such that the number of parking spaces required per code is, is about, you know, square footage.
the square footage in areas of public use, things like the front of house seating, patio dining areas. And, you know, we're approaching levels that in some markets are reaching half of our business now flowing through the Chipotle lane. I'm not saying in such a beautiful center and I'm not trying to patronize you either. It is absolutely a beautiful center and a beautiful building. And we are trying to provide both indoor and outdoor dining. We full well intend that our customers will park and eat and stay there and enjoy their meal. But it is also true that. I would, I would, I don't have a study in front of me, but I would be very curious to hear how often would we really have twenty seven different people parking a car, twenty seven groups of people parking a car at the same time with a Chipotle lane as their, as their secondary means of, you know, getting, getting their meal. I think that might be pretty low.
Okay. Well, I understand. Mr. Wilson, anything further you wanted to say on that point? Not required. I just thought I'd ask.
I, I think the, the biggest thing I could add is the landlord of the shopping center is aware of the circumstances. So I think hopefully. If a change in tenant or occupants comes up, they would be aware of that early on in the process and able to make adjustments occurred accordingly with that in mind.
Oh, got it. So that email which I have as exhibit I, you're pointing out that, you know, staff, Gig Harbor staff pointed out to the landlord this particular issue and ultimately the landlord's the one that decides who the tenants are. And that's, you know, sort of a built in method. As long as the landlord is aware, they should be, you know, assuming they're competent landlords. You know, they're aware of it. So I, it makes sense to me. So great. Well, I don't have anything further, anything further from, from Mr. Murdoch before we.
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Mr. Wilson, anything further from you?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. And is Benjamin Fiedler part of your team? Not required to hear from Benjamin Fiedler, but I do see that person identified.
He works with FHA architects as well. Just kind of managing me and the project is a little bit as well.
Okay, so no need to, he can, he, he could have hopped on. I assume no need to hear from him. So I'll go back to Mr. Hammer. Mr. Hammer, based on what you have heard and what's happened here today, anything further on behalf of city staff?
Nothing further from me. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Well, I don't always get to do this, but it is nice when I do. And by the way, I note no one has joined the meeting. We have no members of the public that have attended. So I just want that to be clear on the record. I'm not ignoring members of the public. They're all excited to have a Chipotle and they, you know, no one, no one hopping on to express opposition. But what I was going to say was, having reviewed the file before me, having heard the testimony of city staff and the applicant team. I do not see any issue with ultimately recommending, sorry. I do not see any issue with ultimately approving the proposal for a conditional use permit, site plan review and design review with the recommended conditions of approval that were provided by city staff. So my intent is to issue such a decision here in the next ten working days and I wish everyone good luck moving forward and safety and good health as we continue on in the weird environment we're currently living in. So with that, we can end today's hearing. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks very much.